We have Kevin and Megan and Becker joining us tonight. Wait a minute over there. So you are on, so whoever like Kevin, you have the floor. Or Megan or Rebecca.
But you're on mute.
Can you unmute them?
You're on mute.
Hey Megan, it's great seeing you. If you can unmute yourself, we can hear you.
She can't.
Yes, it's already put, it is on.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay.
I bet my husband wishes he had a mute button on me sometimes. All right.
All right, everyone all right over there?
Yeah.
Yes, here we are.
All right, so before I get started, good evening. The Myron ISG team was in Washburn on Monday night to work with the long range planning committee to review options and get feedback, and that's what we'll present tonight. So we'll spend about ten to fifteen minutes going through this. So I'll start off real quickly just on the what we've learned, and then Kevin will spend majority of this going through a couple of different options, and then we'll wrap up with next steps. So I will share my screen right now. All right, there we go. So again, what we've learned, future considerations and next steps. This is a slide that you've seen before. This is where we are in that master planning process. Right now, we're developing options and scope. And we would move into community engagement next. So what we've learned, again, we did a permission to proceed survey in the fall, and we did two survey mailings because the third party survey company that facilitated the mailing ended up missing a section. It was an error in grabbing the data or grabbing the addresses. Therefore, there's two mailings, and overall, there are support. So this doc, this chart we see right here shows that overall, there were five hundred and eighteen participants, which meets the statistical number needed for predictive day, for predictive data. And we see that fifty-eight percent of your non-parents, non-staff are interested in learning more about what could be done in the district. The district, so Tom ran some numbers to kind of frame rough, to frame the thought process around how much would a project cost taxpayers of Washburn? So right now, he's using a six percent interest rate. Again, that's conservative for today's times. But looking at what a forty-six million dollar project would cost down to a twenty-five million dollar project, and what the impact on the mill rate increase. So that means that at forty-six million dollars, a forty-six million dollar project would increase the taxes seven dollars and twenty-seven cents to the mill rate, meaning for every hundred thousand dollars of property, a seven hundred and twenty-five dollar increase. So it was the highest number ran forty-six, going down to twenty-five, something a little bit more palatable. The mill rate increase was three dollars and ninety, or three, three point ninety-four. So out of a hundred thousand dollar property, anticipating three hundred and ninety-four dollars a year. Again, this is something that was conservative to frame our thought process and to guide next steps. Where are you in comparison to your neighbors? This, and I'm running through this quickly so we can spend more time on the options, but this tar point Tom and Ivy have, and they can share it with the board afterwards. But right now, you're at five dollars and eighty-one cents, and how does that compare on your mill rate? How does that compare overall the state, that state that seven dollars and twenty-two cents? And in your, in your neighbors, you're kind of in the middle. All right, so Kevin will spend some time talking about the meat of this presentation or where the district could go, that master planning options.
All right. So we jump to this, what we did since we were last with the, the work that we did in kind of late spring of two thousand and twenty-three, was we put together kind of the wish list of all the things we could do with the current secondary building, and also considered a, what is, how does a new building compare to that? And really what, as the Tom and the team started to look at the tax impacts and debt capacity, that's really where that new building concept of even, I think, when we even looked at a scenario of just making it a new high school, even that alone really pushed up against that debt limit capacity. Much less would voters be acceptable to the, to the tax impact. So what we want to do is look at some, some more options within your current facility. And so what we've done here is laid out five scenarios or five options, we call them. So first one, Megan, if you want to jump to that. The first one is that we can actually, Megan, let's go to, yeah, perfect. Option one, this looks at all your capital maintenance. So this says, hey, let's take the building that we have, refresh all the needs. So the immediate roughly when, when we had gone through this and prioritize this, all the facility assessment needs from HVAC to code compliance for like accessibility to doors and windows, to roofing, to parking lots and such. Roughly twenty-one mil, twenty, twenty-one point five million dollars there. Emerging needs of just under five million dollars and future needs of approximately five hundred thousand. So what that gets you, that option one gets you is a refresh and updated building, but it doesn't get you is a reconfigured secure entrance or reconfigured spaces. So a lot of your spaces would function better than they are now, but they, as far as refreshed and better HVAC and such, but they wouldn't function any differently than you have now. So Megan, if you want to jump to option two. So option two, this is where we said, hey, what if we said, let's look at just doing immediate capital maintenance needs? So that's the twenty-one point five million dollars. And then what if we just looked at scaling back our renovations and additions? And what if we just did the secure entrance addition to the secondary building? So again, if you think back, some of the early tax impacts that the district looked at, this is just under that smallest dollar figure that the district, that scenario the district has ran of twenty-five million dollars. This one's approximately twenty-four million dollars. But again, you're not getting any of those other additions or renovations that we had studied last year. So option three, what this does is that same exact thing. So immediate needs at the secondary building. But then this one does an elementary secure entrance. So this is something that the leadership team brought up to us here relatively recently, and we wanted to study and say, hey, if we were to look at a secure entrance at the secondary building, we should also at least do an option to look at the cost of doing one at the elementary building. And so this little plan on the bottom right here shows how we would, it's kind of hard to see, but at the main entrance, just to the right of the main entrance, there's two classrooms there or two rooms. We would take those rooms and convert those to the office area. The existing office area would then be converted to two classrooms. So it's kind of a swap of spaces, and then we could have the proper secure entrance flow into the office area, check visitors in before they go into the rest of the building. So we wanted to provide that as an option.
I think one thing to add was that on Monday night, when the team shared this option, we actually shared with long range planning committee, we shared an option that looked at an addition onto this building. And we were encouraged to look at some two less expensive alternatives. And so therefore, we had this on the back burner, the renovation was about a million dollars less.
So option four, what this does is, is what you see here is those immediate needs are lower. So you see at thirteen point eight million dollars. So what's the difference? Well, the slide here a little bit later on, but we, yep, okay, that's fine, Megan. Let's, let's jump to that, and then we'll come back. What we said is, we said, hey, that twenty-one roughly million dollars of facility maintenance or capital maintenance, that's a lot. Let's maybe relook at the, some of those things. Is there some of those items that we could say, hey, let's maybe take those out of that immediate need? And some of them could be addressed later on down the road. We also recognize that the district has put a lot of dollars into the facilities over the years. And so there is history showing that you have been able to bite off pieces of, of facility needs over time. So what you see here in these gray items are ones that we said, hey, let's at least pull these out and say either things like, like carpet laminate floor replacement. Those are things that a lot of districts can take on as summer projects, as they can kind of fit them into the budget. And then there's other ones like the restroom accessibility. We pull it out of this, recognizing that maybe we just want to put it into an option and say, let's just pull out a capital maintenance, but we may still want to consider accessibility improvements and updates independently on their own, if that makes sense. So we, we just wanted to say kind of reassess this a little bit and pull some of those things out. So what you see here is this looks.
Just to interject quick, so like this would not remove restrooms completely. And Kevin will talk about how these are strategically placed. So when you look at that twenty-one million that went down to thirteen million, some of them were suggesting to just remove a table, like the flooring, and others moved into this master planning. So we've removed that almost deduction of cost. Sorry.
Nope, you're good. So Megan, if you want to go back to the one that kind of did the overview of option four. Yep, so here, this is where you see that immediate needs of approximately thirteen point eight million dollars, and then middle school, high school building improvements of approximately seven point seven million dollars with a total of twenty-one point five million dollars for this scenario. And then Megan, if you want to jump to that plan, yeah, so this is great. What this shows you is for that, the, the capital maintenance aside, for that roughly thirteen point eight million dollars, that seven point seven million dollars of building improvements, it's, that includes a secure entrance addition and renovation, and where it does show those toilet room remodels on the lower level here, and then refreshing the locker rooms. And then on the upper, I should say, on the second floor, we're refreshing and updating the counseling space, which is the current off, high school office, I believe. The wellness area, the family consumer science lab as well, staff workroom. And then one thing that we, that we had studied and said, hey, if we can't build new locker rooms, we tried to come up with a way to provide a third locker room on this level, so that will be fully accessible. So we said, something to consider is taking the existing tech ed classroom, converting that into a locker room. We'd want to update the tech ed lab, because then we're going to have tables, and that's going to be a learning space as well. One of the suggestions Monday night was we might want to look at a kind of a wall separation between that, oh, in that tech ed lab, so we could have more of a clean side and more of, think of like a dirty or equipment heavy side. So that was just an idea. We'd still want to be able to keep supervision through. What would that locker room get you? That would get you a locker room that is on your, is, that is on your same level as your gym. So you'd have a locker room that is fully accessible. So it'd have showers, it'd have toilet, toilet stalls in it as well. And so then you would have a one locker room that would be fully accessible. It would be more than just a team locker room, probably. We'd have PE lockers, a combination of PE lockers in there as well, so you could really utilize it however that would be needed. Option five is the exact same scenario, except now we're adding that elementary secure entrance into this scenario. So you see that second from the bottom line item, elementary secure entrance for one point three million dollars, renovating and kind of moving that office up to the front into the existing space. So this scenario would be up to just under twenty-three million dollars. So as a quick summary here, these are five scenarios that we kind of came up with within kind of the grander concept that we have put together last year of some scenarios to consider. The option one, the where you're just focused on the capital maintenance. Then you have two that really does capital maintenance and secure entrance. Three is, is capital maintenance, secure entrance at both buildings. And now option four is less capital maintenance and then more building improvements at the middle, at the secondary building. And option five is that less, the less capital maintenance and building improvements at the secondary plus the elementary secure entrance. So we kind of gave you a wide variety of cost ranges here to just give you some more options to consider and give your communities some, some options to consider.
So where do we go from here? We are, we went through the list of capital maintenance deducts, and that was something that the Myron ISG team did. We'd like to sit down with Homer and the administrative team just to make sure that everyone is agreeant with what we, what we're proposing right now in that thirteen point eight that reduced capital maintenance goal. So that'd be next. And then we would recommend validating confirming tax impacts. And so it's typical in this, in this process to bring in a third party to validate that, and they can usually come up with some creative financing solutions that minimize. They look at minimize impact to taxpayers. So right now, we're running that six percent scenario at three ninety-four at the twenty-five and hopes that if another, if we reevaluate and look at a creative way, they may be able to minimize that impact to your residents. We will work with school perceptions to kick off the next survey. So the first one was that permission to proceed. This next would be a facilities assessment, master planning. So allowing the district to, or sorry, allowing the district residents to provide feedback on these options or option that we choose to put forward with that. So in our plan is to work again with the district leadership team to figure out what were, what that survey looks like, along with that third party school perception, and share it with the long range planning committee and the school board in April. And then if approved, move forward with having that survey land in the mailboxes of residents in May, getting results back in two thousand and twenty, or summer of two thousand and twenty-four. So we try to get in within our fifteen minute window here, it's at six seventeen. Questions for us?
Megan, before, as you're formulating questions, just as those things were removed in that price for the capital improvements came down, we will also be updating our tenure plan to see when those things could then be done internally. So some of the things that are coming out to get that number down, we then would update our tenure plan for the floor and the painting, furniture, cabinets, things of that nature, that would update that. We're basically, we exhausted our tenure plan now. It got to the point that this was necessary to study. As these come off, we'll add those in with tenure plan. So they will be covered, just as a point.
That's a great point, Tom. Again, with those emerging and those future needs as well. So that would then trickle into the tenure. It is very common for a district to go through this process, identify all the needs, and then start to prioritize what the taxpayers can support at that time. So they'll move forward with a chunk of that prioritized needs or a segment of that. And then the additional goes into the master plan, long range master plan. And then the district can chip away at that year after year if money is available. So strategically, that's what Kevin said, we made the deduct of that down to that thirteen point eight million for things that could be updated without tearing apart walls and things like that. Question.
I guess this really isn't the appropriate.
Phone now, phone, notification, calendar, nineteen minutes ago, calendar, upcoming event.
Were already in our kind of existing tenure plan, maintenance plan?
So can you say that again, Tina?
Were any of, like, they identified immediate needs, emerging needs and future needs. Then we came up with the capital maintenance re-prioritization, you know? And my question is, are any of the emergency needs or those, or emerging needs, those already identified and put into our like existing tenure plan from?
Carpet, tile, painting, furniture. Those are all things that we take bits and pieces and rotate around in the building to update that as an annual basis. All of those things that are in there are already in the tenure plan. We have to adjust and look at some of the bigger ones.
Yeah.
Because there's X amount of dollars we can do in a year, and that's something that long range planning prioritizes. Like right at this time of year, we'd be looking at, okay, what are our summer projects?
Yeah.
What can we afford to present, what's at eight one, what's at about forty-six?
Yes.
And then we'll set and set up the bid, what's going to get that. Well, we have to re-identify the greatest ones, all the way down to, you know, over ten years.
Yeah.
Chip away. But we accomplish some great things, like these labs, outdoor facilities, aquatics, high tunnel, bioswiss. So we can still accomplish some of the big ticket items.
Yeah.
So as they look at, at doing this, the construction pieces of it, those would be done during the summer months? Or would they, would that have to be doing during the school year too, or?
Well, working through a few of these in my past, some are done year up, and they just minimize the impact on things. But, and Kevin and Megan chime in, in terms of time of construction, sometimes it's year round, the majority of adult, because of where, where we live, would be in the summer.
Yeah, I would say the majority of this would be summer. One example I would say though, is we worked with Barron Area School District and their middle school, and they had like two rooms that were kind of flex rooms in their building. And so we were able to work kind of room by room, and they had staff that was like, yep, I'll move through the school year if I can get an updated space. So that's like the, that's probably not the norm. Most of it would probably happen over the summer, but then if you do have some flexibility of spaces, you might be able to do a little bit of work in some of the spaces during the school year.
And new additions, so like the secure entrance addition, that would take longer than one summer. So we would create a phasing plan that allowed for the district to continue to operate. We understand you're an educational facility, but reroute traffic and students so that we could build during the, during the year and then occupy that space as soon as possible.
We've got major electrical work on this building, they work through the day. Fire alarm systems, they, so, or leaves coming under all, so it's something that's awesome. Noisy at times.
And if, so that's always the first, one of the first priorities. So if the district chooses to go to referendum and the referendum passes, it's sitting down right away to understand, okay, here's our preliminary plan. How can we phase construction to minimize the impact to you as a district? Because your first need is to educate students, so we'll sit down and understand what your summer school schedule is, what your bell schedule is, what classrooms you have available. It will create a strategy that minimizes impact.
So are there looking at the, the needs that we have for our kids? The major building renovation needs are fit into these, the plans?
Based on the survey that we received back from staff, part of, access and security with the top funds that were on there. Then we started looking at those locker room space and other areas that were emerging. And then when we got into that seventy-seven million dollar on the footprint, auditoriums, and that kind of stuff. So a lot of staff input that went into what areas would be impacted. But the driving force was to update building, fix areas that need to be repaired, tuck points, brickwork, windows, things of that nature. All the agents you can see in the building, and then the secure and accessible for the driving force.
So is there like change to any of the classroom, classrooms or the classroom sizes or anything?
Yeah, just the ones that were highlighted there, so there'd be an upgrade in that one model there. Counseling office removed, the high school, middle school office would move down into that new, new secure area. The staff would have a new workroom, you'd have a new locker room up where the nice, where the tech ed classroom is. Tech ed would be revamped on this floor. We have a mezzanine that's not to code, very nicely built, wonderful construction, just not to code. So that would also be something that would be addressed.
I would, Tom, if I could, I'd also say what this doesn't show is a lot of those, like all of the classroom HVAC improvements. So HVAC, so heating and cooling systems would be replaced. And because of that, you end up replacing ceilings, or if it's a newer ceiling, you remove and reinstall. Same thing with lighting. So there's a lot of improvements across those classroom spaces. It's just like not moving walls and changing those types of things.
I think bathrooms on cafeteria, another great, it's like one of the bathroom, so those are the priority areas.
Yeah, one.
Maybe with building, it's like we did at the elementary school my first summer, and it's color scheme on the outs, seal the building. So it looks like it matches.
Megan, can you go to that list of facility needs? One thing that did come up, the very last item, when we were talking Monday night, we didn't have this list Monday night, but I, afterwards, we really felt that this would be helpful just to, for the, for obviously the board, and maybe as a follow-up to the long range committee, to understand some of those capital maintenance needs and what is in or, or isn't in, right? One of the things was saying, hey, if we, if we don't get an auditorium and we understand it's very expensive, can we at least look at stage lighting improvements and dimming controls? And well, really, when we went back and looked, that's already part of that capital maintenance dollars of that thirteen point eight million dollars. So I think that's, some of those things are going to be important of, no, we may not get a brand new auditorium because of the cost of it, but there are things that we're doing to update and improve the spaces that we do have.
Is that big enough for two classrooms where the office is now?
Good question, yeah.
It seems like it would be small, two small rooms.
And long range planning, we also brought up the idea that we wouldn't necessarily want classrooms to move inside, keeping classrooms on the windows, right? And so right now, with the repurposing, the model that was shown here, it would allow for two sections for every grade level from four K through sixth grade. And it would also allow a couple flex classrooms that would either be used as intervention spaces or for like the third section on one of those off years. And then for, like, I think this one was one point three. I think the other one is just over two million, and that would be an add-on, so it wouldn't impact. It would actually add more, more room, so it's a more expensive option. But that was something also that Myron has showed us is what does it look like if it's actually an addition rather than repurposing those first two classrooms?
And the daycare would still fit in there?
Yes, the daycare will still fit in there. Yep. With the repurposing, that wouldn't change it at all with the add-on, there's some flexibility for extra classrooms.
So the add-on would come out the front?
Kind of where the big pavilion is right now, yeah.
And that would be mostly then office space, is that what you're, or classroom?
Yep, so that would be office space with a secure entrance, two sets of doors. And then what was formerly the office would still be repurposed for classrooms, but then that would definitely be used as intervention spaces or extra spaces we use for flexible classrooms. And then it would have more classrooms along the outsides of the building like we currently have.
Does it add? And I guess I'm thinking like the, those two specialized rooms, which seem pretty small. Is there a way to find space for that to either combine that into one room and then find another room someplace else, or?
In this building?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's already talked about.
Mm-hmm.
It's not the best.
Yeah, it's a small, it's small, and no windows is hard. Okay. Those are my questions. Anybody else have some questions?
So if you have, we're going to be working with them, I think we have to, and then the three down the arch. One more at the end, then I don't have to be like, finding people wrong. And we'll start playing a bit harder on the city, for you to be sent around us. Exciting. Most of you, you're going to be sending this out to the community, the feedback from the community and what their tolerance would be for a revenue.
So would all of those options be sent out to the community?
That would be on the box. I mean, if you want to do this one, this one, we would. That would be a thought, I mean, you want to do this one, this one, we would narrow it. And Megan, you can probably, I don't know if we would send, or you would recommend sending all five, we probably narrow it down.
That's, I would recommend narrowing it down, and that's when we'll get the survey consultant and school perceptions. And they'll provide feedback on what they feel will give us some most reliable feedback from the community. So you can make your decision. Um, and then before we, before that survey is wrapped up. We definitely come to the long range planning committee and the board to make sure that you're in agreeance with how the strategy is being laid out.
Can you pull up that, the calendar that you had on there before?
The, the calendar, the, this one?
Yep. Hmm, yes.
So I just noticed that my last bullet point here, I forgot the V in survey. Uh, my bad, but I'll change that, I'll send the district and update a copy here. But yeah, so um, the goal is now to continue to. Work with, or to continue to work with the district leadership team to confirm. Our assumptions at the capital maintenance, and then we can move the rest of that into that ten-year long range plan. And then we'll get together with the survey company to start discussing strategy. And figure out how we can best relay this information to the community to get clear concise data back. Um, and then we'll share that with the board along the way. And if the board approves the survey, our goal is for it to land in mailboxes in May. And then the survey would be open for about two and a half weeks. And they'll take about two-ish weeks to get survey feedback, so we should be able to have. Survey results this summer yet. And if the board would like to go to referendum in November, just a reminder that. You'd have, the board has to adapt prior to the end of August. I believe the date is August twenty third. But it's right around the end of August there, that's seventy days before the election.
We have a nice time to June, July, and view.
Yeah.
Cause in, or take section August, and then it gets sent out to.
I know this is a lot to digest today, so like I said, I'll make this one change here on the last bullet point at the V to survey. Uh, resend to Tom, and then he can distribute for the board to um, review again, and we are here to answer any questions. Um, comments, um, feel free to use us as a sounding board, provide feedback.
And you are aware that we're getting a new administrator in?
We heard, yes.
I've been meeting with and talked to Denise.
Okay.
Shared all the information that about the plan. And when she's available, she'll be joining to bring in for various lockage clients. But now moving into the summer, she's on board.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on this transition. It's it's kind of a hard time to do both. At the same time, but if we're keeping her informed, that's. In it, okay.
My question is about the validated and confirming the tax impacts and um. And this is, I I guess we'll just know information, we know information, but I'm assuming our credit rating is going to be very good. It's pretty awesome. Um, so you have an inkling of how that might change, like some of the projected um. Effects to the moderator. Like, I mean, obviously it's gonna be like favorable than our conservative projections, but will that actually have an impact on what we can actually do?
Okay.
Not in yes, just.
We come up with what we, the community, but it's not a survey as.
Yeah.
Accents, accents, tolerance, and then you start finalizing.
Yeah.
Yeah, same. I just kind of like, I've been thinking about that.
One percentage of significant impact on what you.
Thanks for that.
I mean, we just threw a straight number of creation.
Yep.
And we're gonna be looking at bonds.
Yep. Created financing, I got a little worried, but it's all like, yes.
Well, you know, we just finance the playgrounds. Right, at the rock, um, they were very competitive.
Right, yeah. Yeah, okay, great things.
Boy, I thought we had the hard part over with the superintendent search, but no, right into the next step, right into the next step. Right, well, thank you for your, the information tonight. Um, do we have any other questions for them while they're here? No, okay, well, thank you again.
Hi, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, bye.
Um, now it is time for uh, public comment. If you would like to speak for a public comment, each person has three minutes and it's their time alone, and it cannot be passed on to someone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful, people on Zoom are welcome to join public comment, please put your name in the chat if you would like to make a comment. Is there anyone here who'd?
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I'm Jewel Pickard, and as I was watching this presentation. We were talking about three different locker rooms, if I got it right, and maybe some bathrooms and doing some work on there. My question is, are, uh, what is that gonna look like? Is there going to be one locker room for boys? And one locker room for girls, or three locker rooms where each one, one is going to be for boys? One is going to be for girls, and is the same going to be for the bathrooms where they're going to be separate? One for boys, one for girls, and I would appreciate a specific answer at some point, thank you.
Charmaine?
Hi, Charmaine Swan, I'm actually here a little bit with my work hat on tonight, so pretend I'm putting my work hat on. So if you don't know, I work for the American Lung Association. I coordinate uh, the Northwest Wisconsin Lung Health Alliance. I just wanted to give a little quick update. Um, we have been in partnership with UW Extension Superior Adventures. Um, so Bayfield County, UW Extension, Bayfield County Public Health Department and um, the Washburn Club. We have been working on a pilot after-school program specific for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders here in Washburn. And it's going really well. We've only been able to offer it, be, okay, so because the funding came from jewel settlement dollars through. Through the State of Wisconsin Tobacco Prevention Control Program. Um, Tom remembers we were a part of actually trying to apply for a much bigger grant through what was called the Wisconsin Partnership Program. That didn't pan out, but actually we were able to sort of resize the project deliverables and uh, anyways. We didn't get to do as much as we wanted to do, we're only offering the after-school programming one day, or yeah, one day a month. We've done three so far and like literally. No advertising, I think I put it on the PTO Facebook group, I texted a few parents. And we came to middle school lunch, we've had twenty-five kids every time. And likely would have more, um, if we were more regular, right? Like if we were like every Wednesday or every Friday, for example. It's drop-in, and we've kept that really intentionally to not have any barriers about having their parents have to remember to sign them up, et cetera. Um, we only have four more sessions for the pilot program, and the funding will. We will exhausted the funding by then, we are looking at applying for, we just learned that there's a brighter futures initiative grant. The same grant that funded what is Spark in Ashland County. So we're really trying to get Bayfield County to be on board, um, and hope that the school district might be willing to join that partnership. Uh, for that, for that grant process that's gonna happen this September, or excuse me. That RFA comes out sometime this summer, we don't know the date yet. Um, anyways, the kids are really enjoying it, they, we've been playing basketball, we've been playing floor hockey. We took them to the ice skating rink while there was still ice. Um, we've been doing art and crafts projects, and really, it just feels like they want to be there to hang out with their friends and. So that's been really great, um, okay, and then really quick. Uh, the city council, I'm also, okay, so now I'm gonna take off my work hat, now I'm just me, the person. Um, the city council is gonna vote on a possibility for a Washburn Bike Park on next Monday, the twel- the twelfth. And I just want to let you know that you know how the NICA students came to do their presentation.
Mm hmm.
They've been really involved in that process and advocating, so that's really great. And then World Play Day, my kid had so much fun, I wish we could have World Play Day every day at school. So maybe we can work on having more World Play Days.
Thanks, Charmaine. Is there anybody online that wants to? There's nobody online. Connect to DC, all right, we'll move on, um, we don't have the financial reports tonight. Um, committee reports, long range planning.
Um, so you heard the presentation, um, regarding the building project, and so that was the majority of the long range planning and the questions around there. Um. We, uh, then after that, um, like the time, we had a short period of time just to review our strategic. Planning process, it seems like this committee agreed that we would do kind of an in-house strategic planning. We can use CISA as like maybe consultants or help with some survey and survey development to get community input on our strategic plan. But otherwise, um, the admin team will be able to facilitate um, our strategic initiatives over the next. Uh, like three to five years, I don't, I don't even know if that's fine, but I think I know, so like, and um, and. I think we need to ask, and I don't think I need to answer it now, but we have to find out how the board wants to be involved. Like, so should we do a special meeting, or should we have you join the long range planning committee meeting? Um, and I, I think we can decide that.
For the strategic planning part of it.
Um, and then we just also heard from, um, from a member of that committee, just wanting to make sure that we are very intentional. About improving communication over the next like three months, and obviously indefinitely, we always want to be improving. Um, but, but the reflection was we may have missed an opportunity on some, uh, on some communication regarding our district administrator selection. Um, or that we, or we could have just improved that process, um, so knowing that we're going into this referendum. And knowing that we're going into big changes for our district, um, they just wanna, they just wanna. Make sure that we have some kind of strategy to improve our location. Um, I don't really have like a ton of details, uh, but, um. But if we want to put that on agenda in the future, we can talk about that, but, um, but it was a. That was the, that was the summary of the function.
Thanks. Policy committee?
Policy committee, I've reviewed, um, a lot of policies, uh, spring one. W A S B, so, um, a lot of policies will be impacted by that, but for this reading, most of it was language. Uh, we had some addition where sections and seventy-five forty, uh, technology. Uh, code was able to review this, uh, section and check those boxes. Um, we looked at the district supported student activity accounts, district supported activity accounts in the language that was clarified in those policies. Um, eighty-seven hundred, I think the selection would be up to two years for, uh. Expressing milk. But there's a frustrating policy.
Lack pitting employees.
Lack pitting employees. Uh, and then ninety-one thirty colored requests that, uh, added for spell. Someone who's questioning, um, things that are being taught in the classroom and library materials is added to that policy, so. Uh, those are some of the updates. That I want to have, requiring these changes, uh, please say vote on this.
Right. And we'll be acting on those later. Um, school improvement committee?
Um, okay, so that was another, just like kind of review on the data and where we're at. And we're always, um, seeing some progress. Um, in different areas, and we get to highlight and see some of this, I guess what I'm kind of taking away from, uh, from that update. Is how that teams hit so well together, um, and I really sense that they have. A feeling of support from the board and support from the community to do the job that they need to do to make our students proficient. In all of the other areas of academics, um, I did ask, I think we did ask specifically about two things. One was, um, where social and emotional learning can play into our students' achievement. Um, and so we had a brief discussion about that. And, um, and then the other was, um, oh, just regarding like testing and like, you know, I think our. I think our community might be getting a little bit of survey fatigue, which we just kind of wonder if the students are getting a little bit of testing fatigue. Um, and, and there is actually, uh, like a plan to say, hey, once we get our feet under us. And once we start working with this data, we'll really like understand it without having to test the students all the time. But this really brings up a really great framework, or I guess foundation, um, for, for the system of improvement. And so, um, so you can really start to see that, uh, based on, based on the reporting and their accomplishing, so. Good work to everybody.
Nice, thank you. Um, administrative reports?
Yeah, I would just add, coming on COVID, the, the need for testing and, uh. As you get back to that normal forgetting about DLC, not writing that data. To properly take a lot, to get back to. I was spending time with the administrative team over the next month on a budget. Uh, my goal is to get a budget ready for the summer. Um, staffing decisions will happen straight through summer, but putting financial situation in where it's. Listens some options, there've been some updates, uh, so I update my report tonight. Repost and then we'll share and drive as things come out, we get more data, we get more information. Uh, saying about reaching out to CISA, I mean, but even next week, getting costs on people's services and how that might. You know, be impacted in the district, so as I get those, I don't need to be a pulling die without. Uh, truancy plan, working with the county, um, we had our initial meeting, just to map out what that looks like, to be our required. Larger school in Bayfield County to facilitate that, so working with Judge Anderson, the district attorney, all the sheriffs and. Police to come add all school districts, uh, human services, Bayfield County, uh, coming up on our truancy plan, if they can look at that. Uh, and that's with the next five years, we're right in the middle of an office of civil rights report. Uh, in a few weeks, it's a collection of data. Um, that they call for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So then they use that data of the set term policy, it doesn't make sense, but that's how they do it, the federal government. So we're right in the middle of that. Might take a little longer when we do the building section because everyone's, they've never done, so. But I will be, um, gonna be with the bus company to finalize our contract with the bus company. Buying your contract was up, um, I'm just saying. Um, we met with Upper Lakes Food, uh, today, we're constantly looking at to improve food service and how we can do it. Um, we met with their, uh, regional rep, Becca, who will help us with our menu plan right now. Between the best. Putting together a menu, and we're getting healthier food and ingredients that were real ingredients. Uh, but I might not have taken into consideration the entire week calorie count or this or that or the other thing, so. What Becca's gonna do is take kind of what we've been doing, but make sure that we're in compliance with state requirements, so. Still gonna be, you know, healthy and tasting good, and the kids are gonna like it. Um, but we met with them with food service Saturday. They also met, uh, uh, Chef Craig, and Chef Craig's gonna be on site to help them with their skills, so we can get back to more. Cooking in the kitchen and development of their skill sets, so, uh, we can really expand what we're offering students moving forward. And, um. Serve any students, uh, what they like, and then putting a lot of those things on the menu within reason because. He asked the kids, gonna be, you know, chicken, and it's gonna be this and that and the other. And then also looking at, you know, a separate menu, the high school really liked, what are they? Sweet sour chicken, high school loved it, the elementary not as much, so, um, maybe on certain days or, you know, months. So maybe on certain days or, you know, months, high school gets this type of an experience in elementary with them. Working with them, but very excited. They seem really excited to work with us. Food service staff seem to be looking forward to getting some help with their skill development.
That's great. I'm excited to share my first, my first update to share is a visitor, visit from Governor Evers on Tuesday of this week. And so we were asked for security purposes not to share that out publicly ahead of time. But we're very excited and grateful to get the opportunity to have him join our building. It was a very short tour and they were on a very tight schedule. So we condensed it as much as we could to show all of the things that we're doing from the early learning center all the way up through 12th grade in a very short period of time on a very short tour. But it was a great experience. We got to meet him and his staff at the door and welcome him into the building. We stopped in a couple classrooms so he could see what learning looks like in action here in Washburn Elementary. We highlighted that his purpose for the visit was learning more about student mental health as well as a specific program sources of strength. And so we highlighted what, how we support student mental health through universal instruction of lifelong learning skills and school counseling. Through our warm welcoming classrooms and environments, through relationships and student connections. So as we kind of moved through the school, we touched on each of those topics and he got to see general education classrooms, special education classrooms. We went through and to show off our five-day fourth K program, which is a unique feature that we have many other schools in Wisconsin do not. Our early learning center, another unique feature that we really are proud of and, and need support to continue. And then went outside and showed many of our outdoor learning spaces and how important that is in both academic learning and social emotional learning. And I think he at that point was really pretty impressed and and, and it was a great because what we heard from the Department of Public Instruction when we gave a very similar tour, that one was much longer, was just how unique and how special Washburn is. And we heard that from the governor of Wisconsin as well, who is, of course, our former state superintendent. So he knows schools and is very in tune with what's happening throughout the state. After that, we came back into the building and met in the library. We had four students from the high school share more about the sources of strength program. What are the activities that they do? How do they impact themselves and their peers and the teachers and the overall school culture? And then to finish out the tour, there was an interview with the local TV station as well as the local newspaper. So there's both an article and a clip on the news as well as an article in the Daily Press. And we gave him a few cards and special things as he left and got a follow-up email from his staff thanking us and for that tour. And then if you have a chance to read the Daily Press article, it closes with a couple quotes from him. And I think this is pretty special. The governor of Wisconsin said this about Washburn. He said, "It's a tough time for kids coming out of the pandemic. A lot of stress, a lot of anxiety," Evers said. "Washburn has gone to great lengths to address these issues," Evers said. "What they're doing to work with kids is really important. They're doing it at the front end." "I learned that if you work at it, there are ways to keep education for kids positive. Tension is down, anxiety is down. Students can be strong mentally and academically at the same time. It helps them be better kids and better learners," he said. "We need to see more of what Washburn is doing across the state of Wisconsin." It was pretty cool to open up and read this morning.
It's like, sometimes you know, a governor comes through, they go, they're sort of a grand tour. It's just softball. We're hearing you flew here.
And flew back.
Saw our school.
Yes. He came here for a Washburn.
He came here just to see, which is kind of
I just want to say that Ivy was a star. She did great. Betsy did a very nice interview. She was, she was great. The high school kids were great. The kids were wonderful. They just were, you know, gathering around him and wanting to shake his hand and talk to him and ask him questions and it was really nice that, and I said, my favorite part, which they didn't put on the news, which they should have because that was my favorite part of the whole tour. When they were interviewing him, this little guy about first grade, came up, he saw Miss Ivy on the other side and he skipped right there. He skipped, he was so happy. He was skipping along to go tell her what a great day he had in class.
Right through the interview.
Right through the governor's interview. It was adorable. I wish they had put that part on TV because it was great. I mean, he was, we just see how happy he was. It was just great. It was, that was a, it was a great moment.
Just a few other updates I have for us. At this point in the school year, I usually give an AGR or Achievement Gap Reduction update. So that's funding we receive through the state for meeting one or more of three different strategies. One is class size reduction, one is instructional coaching, and the other one is tutoring or what we call tier-three interventions. And that applies to kindergarten, first, second, and third. And we utilize one or more of those strategies in all of those classrooms and try to implement all three strategies in all those classrooms. And we also set a goal to report back out on that. And our goal is that all students in those grade levels will make one year's growth or more academically. And they will, we will increase proficiency levels. Those are the same two goals that we have for our School Improvement Committee and that work, which really focuses more on third through 12th because that's the state testing age range. And so it's really nice, the combination between AGR and the school improvement work makes it a comprehensive goal and school improvement plan district-wide. And yeah, just an emphasis on early intervention, how important it is. Research shows that the intervention, the time it takes to work one-on-one with a student on a specific scale is dramatically smaller the younger that they are. And how important that is to support our students in developing those skills. And although it's outside of that report, that is why we're, we're focusing on such explicit phonics instruction to develop really strong readers right from the get-go. Same thing with math instruction. We've done a lot of work on what does that math program look like? How do we ensure all students are developing the foundational skills that they need? And we're even to the point where we have data, not testing data from like the iPad or the computer, but just one-on-one testing data that shows what skills kids are working on. To the point that as new students come to us, we can do a quick check-in with them, see what they're missing and ensure that they get the support they need right away. And it doesn't extend longer and show up in gaps later on in, in our older grades, which we're seeing in some of our, our data. So that's just a quick update on AGR and then I'll give a second update at the end of the school year as we continue to increase those proficiency levels. Just a few other updates. We have a Leap Into Learning family event at the elementary on Leap Day. We try to do one or more really big fun family events. We used to call them Title One Events or Math and Literacy Night. But it's going to be all different kinds of learning. Families are welcome, everybody, including the student. We'll have free food. It's going to be sandwiches that they can then build to shape like a frog for the Leap Into Learning theme. And then classrooms all over the school will be open. We'll have a little map where they can see and they can come into any of those classrooms. And it's everything from some of that phonics instruction, what does this look like? If you remember the presentation Amelia Olson provided earlier in the year, she'll have a video running so families can see that. And then some of those examples out on the floor that they can practice them. We're doing scavenger hunts on book genres. There's math activities. There's build your own hopscotch. So some of the physical wellness. And so it's going to be a really fun event, free for all families, and we're excited about that. And then the last updates I have are just related to some of the other committees that we have. So Curriculum Council just met yesterday. We always review district updates and two of those updates are Technology Committee and Professional Development Committee because those two committees have sort of combined with Curriculum Council. And mostly because all of the work with school improvement is aligning so closely, it makes sense to work in that group. And so for Professional Development Committee, we're working on a staff survey as well as the school improvement efforts, which those two things combined will impact our professional development calendar for next year. For technology, we're ready, sort of in fourth quarter into the summer and next year, to review the mission, vision, values, and goals of that Technology Committee, the when, the why, the how. We're also keeping an eye on screen time. It's an ongoing priority, especially as we move further past the pandemic. That's something that is a priority in our community. We see the importance, but we also see the balance. And you'll notice that comes up in Parent Advisory Committee as well. Connection between technology and board policies and even a, a family event in the future, like we did in the past with digital citizenship. So. Cody also talked a little bit about some options on supporting students with switching from Chromebooks to laptops at the secondary level. And so it would be potentially iPads, Chromebooks and laptops. It would open up more opportunities for our upper-level students. It'd also provide strong experiences with three different platforms and devices. And would also make sense because right now our Chromebooks are extending for, I think it's seven years, which is just a little bit past our life expectancy. And we don't want that to negatively impact our oldest students. So we're starting to just explore some of those different options to ensure that we're always providing our students with the best opportunities in learning. And then ongoing cybersecurity. So we had assessments today, I believe. And then we also have professional development opportunities and I will share out those dates, Cody will too, with the board for all staff to ensure that we have those, that professional development in place. Curriculum Council also worked on just PLCs. We talked about data and kind of moving away from some of those bigger standardized tests. But that doesn't mean moving away from data. That actually means increasing data. But now we're starting to use Achieve 3000. So we look at all the star data. We see that as overview, but then we compare it with Achieve 3000 or Lexia or Alex or any of the programs. And of course, what the teachers are seeing in the classroom on a daily basis. So we increase data and as we kind of be mindful about slowly and meaningfully decreasing some of that formal assessments. The other committee update was parent advisory. So this was the whole group. We had some subcommittees previously. Now this was whole group. We reviewed on two of our focus areas, which one of them was behavior, discipline, and accountability. So we shared that out with the whole group. We also talked about food service, really positive feedback on the changes in food service that were made. I even shared the, the downsides and the cost increase, but just really positive feedback from that.
That could be a retirement career for you, you know?
And so we're it's true. Yep. Yes. And the changes in the menu, offering oatmeal. We had yogurt parfaits. So different things like that too, I think. So the committee felt really positive about that. We also did a quick review on school safety, the updated buzzer systems, and parents were grateful for that. And then our next agenda focus is going to be academic achievement. But rather than moving on from those topics, they're not done. They're always going to continue forward. We're actually going to focus on academic achievement within those categories. So behavior, food service, school safety, screen time are all going to be within that academic achievement, big picture. So. The last one was just Wellness Committee. It was a lot of committee meetings. It's been a busy month. Wellness Committee, we started off just to kind of get things up and running. We focused a little bit on staff wellness and some of those sort of easy wins. So we had some social events, spirit wear sales, some fun activities, potlucks like that. And we're now moving into some of those deeper, more meaningful topics, especially related to student wellness. And so reviewing the wellness policy each year. I'm looking at student wellness and student data, perhaps creating student profiles to ensure strong connections and those connections extend from year to year. And just ongoing access to resources for students and families. So we'll continue to address those in the quarterly meetings that we have coming up.
Too much in the news will be very restrictive on who can go in and alter, change grades, change attendance. The system setup was someone could log in if they were, what do we call it?
Super user.
System admin, the super user. And they'd actually go in, log in as the person, the person they know. They'd change that. We took away that, right, to figure out, okay, who moves on. So Cody's working with Skyward and staff to get them to what, everything they need and limiting those system and administrative through one or two people. That's it. Most didn't even know they were. But we've had some security that we need to clamp on. Also shared a lot of everything, everything that went in the board packet in terms of budget. I also shared the staff direct to the council so they know what we're looking for. Your CPI, your insurance, it's worried. So you can share all that information. So staff, this is scratching their head out a little bit, basically.
Right. Thank you. When you were talking about the, the truancy council that they're doing, could we get some numbers on truancy and what those look like? Where it's, I, I see that. Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. There's just three items. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion items. Legislative advocacy update.
And nothing other than just the title, something to keep our
Okay. CISA twelve update.
We didn't have a meeting in January.
Okay. This is going to go past. Washburn Educator Council.
Reports and shared drive with the board. We're working through various things that have been identified. It's a great way that we can talk about things, share things, fix things, but sharing with the board. So you're, you know, what the concerns are and how we're pressing them. Ready to put a vengeance on anybody's like problem or others.
It looks like there was a lot on that conversation.
But like, it's good conversation. If there's a concern and need, that supports that, structures that, administrations do get out in these monthly committees.
Good. All right. Individual action agendas. Do you want to just move on through here with motions?
I move to call for a vote to approve the FMA for
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I need to approve FMA for results.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve the policy updates as listed. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve Danielle Nepstad as Assistant Forensics Advisor. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now we can move to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Very good. You are adjourned. Thank you.